Excellent, thank you. Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, June 29th, 2022. And we will begin with our statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county's public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, I will note that the Board of Commissioners has signed on to a local public official statement on the reversal of Roe v. Wade. And it reads as follows. In response to the devastating and harmful decision by the U.S. Supreme Court to overturn Roe v. Wade, the undersigned public officials in Bloomington, Monroe County and township government stand together in support of an individual's right to bodily autonomy and reproductive choice. Further, as community leaders in Bloomington, Monroe County, we are proud to fund the healthcare, childcare, and birth control needs of low-income individuals and families through multiple local grant programs and township assistance. We stand with Planned Parenthood and the All Options Pregnancy Center as they meet the reproductive healthcare needs of the most vulnerable in our community. We call upon state legislators in Indiana to exercise reason and respect and to protect individuals' rights to make their own healthcare decisions in consultation with their own healthcare providers. We object to any legislative course of action that further erodes a person's right to choose. Thoughtful compassion is the foundation of any just and equitable community. As public officials, it is our responsibility to speak out when we see rights stripped away from our residents. And it is our obligation to oppose decisions that will cause unjust hardship and increase poverty for those that we represent. We object to any civil or human right being taken away by activists on the U.S. Supreme Court and to any legislative action that undermines the well-being of our residents or those of the state of Indiana. With that, any other comments? Okay. So we have a couple of proclamations today.
Whereas, whereas, for centuries, members of the LGBTQ plus community have suffered hostility, fear, discrimination, and a loss of basic human rights. And in the early hours of June 28th, 1969, in New York City, police raided the Stonewall Inn, which sparked the Stonewall riots. And the Stonewall riots became a catalyst for the LGBTQ plus rights movement. And LGBTQ populations generally share the racial and ethnic characteristics of non-LGBTQ plus individuals.
And whereas and whereas teens who identify as LGBTQ plus are more than twice as likely to experience homelessness than their heterosexual and cisgender peers. Youth who identify as LGBTQ plus are four times more likely than their peers to attempt suicide. Research has found that LGBTQ plus youth are more likely to experience stress and fear in school than are non-LGBTQ plus youth. And those who experience the stress are more likely to drop out of school and/or have higher levels of depression and anxiety than their peers. We applauded the U.S. Supreme Court's role in expanding protection of LGBTQ plus rights that included barring workplace discrimination and legalization of same-sex marriage. And we will work to ensure that these rights are both maintained and expanded.
Whereas, we support the 2010 repeal of the U.S. military's policy of don't ask, don't tell. And in support of Pride Month, we have flown the pride flag throughout the month of June at the Monroe County Courthouse. As we say every week in our opening statement, we affirm the right of every resident of Monroe County to live peacefully and without fear. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Commissioners, claim June 28th, 2022 as Pride Day.
Thank you so much. We also have some personnel changes in Monroe County government. And Eric Evans, who's been our Director of Technical Services Department since 2013, is leaving our employ and we're really sad and but but proud of him and his hard work. Greg Crone will become the Technical Services Director. And Richard Kreider will become our new fleet and maintenance person. So really appreciate everyone's hard work. And we've made a proclamation for Eric Evans Day in Monroe County.
Whereas Eric Evans was hired as the Director of Monroe County's Technical Services Department in 2013. In his tenure as the Director, Eric raised the standard for the county's technology. And Eric oversaw the migration of data to the cloud, guided the creation of our new website, and provided vital support in the creation of the Open Gov system for the planning, building, and health departments. He led the Technical Services Department in Monroe County through power outages, cut cables, server issues, email spam, a flood, and a pandemic.
Whereas, in the first weeks of the COVID-19 pandemic, Eric was instrumental in ensuring the continuing operations of Monroe County government. He worked tirelessly to ensure that county employees were able to connect with county servers as they worked from home. Eric utilized creative problem solving to organize our Zoom meetings. As the pandemic waned, Eric provided the guidance and planning to create a hybrid studio for in-person and remote meetings. Eric's leadership made it possible for Monroe County government to continue to serve its residents.
As a musician, Eric has entertained countless residents. He served for a time in the Honor Guard for fallen veterans. Eric has an amazing sense of humor that we will miss. On behalf of Monroe County Government, we wish Eric well on all of his future endeavors. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim June 29th, 2022 as Eric Evans Day in Monroe County.
How about that? I think every day it's Eric Evans Day.
Or his sense of humor.
Thanks for those kind words. It has been, it's been a journey. And, you know, it's that stuff did not get done in a vacuum. And it was a team effort all the way around. While I think I called a lot of the shots and I'm proud of the work I did with that. Obviously, I have my team that worked with me, that very skilled and dedicated folks. I had you guys sitting through countless technical explanations of stuff very patiently. And I did my best to try to dress up the dry technical explanations with a little bit of the Eric razzle-dazzle. But there's only so far you can take it, you know. But, I mean, you would approve the stuff that needed to be bought to replace the stuff that needed to be replaced. When I took over, this network was in bad shape. And we quickly turned that around. You guys approved the deals on it. The council, you know, appropriated the money. Angie always knew where to find the money. I mean, one of the key elements of the work that I've done here has been that there's never been a project that I couldn't go to Angie. And she knew from all these different funding sources. As you know, there are some that can be only earmarked for technical things. And she would keep that list of which ones she knew where the money was. And, and so I think really only by getting all that stuff working together were we able to get to where we got. And, you know, we experienced eight years of, of, you know, fairly peaceful existence on the cyber highway, as it were. You know, no major intrusions, no major money lost, no major data loss. And in this time, whenever municipality and government organizational group has a target on their back, that's something that we all can be proud of. And so I'll definitely look back on that as something that I'm proud to have achieved, having worked with you guys.
Thank you so much.
So should I come up and grab? All right.
Yes, we are, very much.
You're watching your career.
Good luck. All right. Wow. Can I add something? Over the weekend, I was talking to somebody in the Assessors Office who was telling me how thankful they are about what happened at the start of the pandemic. And we were able to keep our employees safe and still conduct county business because of Eric's efforts.
Yeah.
Yes, and I'd like to add that not all county employees and elected officials were easy to get participating on Zoom. And I was certainly one of those. And Eric was very, very patient and went quite ways out of his way to help me be able to continue to participate in our meetings.
So important. Yeah, absolutely. And something that we failed to put in the proclamation was the fact that Eric has been an expert negotiator throughout. He's always managed to find great deals on all of those purchases that we've had to make. So we appreciate that, the great skill that that takes is never appreciated the way it should be. So, but we certainly are going to miss him. And Mr. Crone, good luck, welcome to your new job. And thank you. All right. With that, we do have department updates. And it appears that Lori Kelly, our new administrator for the Health Department, will be providing our update today. Good morning.
Good morning, thank you. So just a few updates to go over. The COVID-19 cases are still stable, but the high transmission remains. Our hospital numbers remain steady. Deaths are very low. Our CDC community level is low. On Monday, the average number of cases were 26 and cases per 10,000 were 51. There are Indiana counties in medium and red community levels. Did want to update about the vaccinations. Children six months to five years are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. The vaccine is being shipped in waves. Once it's received, it is prepared for dispensing and staff will be trained for this age group. Appointments can be made to the Public Health Clinic by calling 812-353-3244. It could be Monday before we are ready to vaccinate this group, but members can call to schedule an appointment. Home tests are still available for those who need them. You can come to the Health Department and get two per person. The Public Health Clinic also has them available and are providing them within various groups that support vulnerable populations and those who are unable to get them otherwise. There is a community health improvement plan scheduled, a kickoff meeting for July 14th. This will be held from 12 to 1:30 at the Fountain Square Ballroom. This is a great opportunity to join community members and leaders to learn more about the process, to review health priorities that need to be addressed, and to get involved in addressing poverty, inequity, substance use, mental health, and more.
Right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I have a question I wanted to ask Ms. Kelly. Do the COVID home tests have expiration dates? Do you know?
That's a great question. That's something I would actually have to find out about.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just wanted to let the public know, that's all.
Sure, Benny, yeah. They do have expiration dates. And they vary between, you know, what you get. But there is, we have information when we give those out because some of them may have dates that will get extended. So just because they have an expiration date doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't good beyond that point. So we are providing information on how you can keep track of that once you get it.
And I was pleased to see last week at the Hoosier Hills Food Bank that in addition to handing out food, that they were handing out the COVID home tests.
Yeah. I was wondering why I was seeing so many on in people's passenger seats. And I thought, whoa, wait, are they handing them out? Yeah, it was really, it was really, really a good idea to have that out there. Really smart. Comments, questions, Commissioner Jones?
No.
All right, thank you both, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. This is the public comment section for items that are not on our agenda. If you do have commentary on this section of our agenda or on any of our agenda items, you're limited to three minutes per person. At two minutes and 30 seconds, you will hear a tone. PTSD. And when you hear that tone, that means that you have 30 seconds to wrap up your final thoughts. And let's see if there's anyone who wishes to speak. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. We don't have anyone here, Nat U. Hill. Okay, all right. We don't have anyone here for public comments, so we will move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of the minutes, June 22nd, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any edits, comments, corrections?
I didn't see any.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for June 22nd, 2022 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, June 29th, 2022, and payroll, July 1st, 2022. Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we have Mr. Miller here to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. The total for claims was $2,794,114.60. Today, I'll focus on the four claims that were greater than $150,000, starting with $426,244.75 for Convention and Visitors Bureau, which was for the third quarter 2022 operational funds. $327,000 was for Indiana University for vaccination reimbursement. $226,170.41 for Kreider and Kreider, Inc. For the construction for Profile Parkway, Pay Application Number Nine. And finally, $159,000 was for Regions Bank Convention Center Loan Payment. As far as payroll, the total was $1,748,632.62. 70.5% were for the direct costs of the main supplemental and incentive payrolls. And the remaining 29.5% were for the indirect costs, primarily taxes and retirement.
Right, thank you so much. Mr. Miller, comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Thank you again. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Oh, Mr. Cockrell.
Yeah, I would just note, I didn't hear Mr. Miller say this, but I wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that we will have, or I think we turned in a claim that will be paid today for $641,000 and And that is for the property purchase at the, with the Ledge Wall quarry. This has gone through both the council and the commissioners. Just wanted to kind of make sure it is part of the record. And if the commissioners would desire to amend the motion to include that, I think that would be really helpful.
I have moved that we amend the motion to add into the claims, the purchase of the Ledge Wall property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the claims. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amendment for the claim signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And so the closing is tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes, which is exciting. Okay. So let's see if there's any other comment from the public on the amended motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the amended claims docket, accounts payable, June 29th, 2022, and payroll, July 1st, 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. I will note for the record that we have received a report from the clerk, and it is for May of 2022. And now we will move on to new business. Item A, please.
Move approval of the ratification of 2022-23 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative, RJDAI Grant Contract. Fund names, JDAI Coordination and JDE, JDAI Programming. Fund numbers, 9122 and 9123. $15,000 comes from 9122 and $55,000 comes from 9123, for a total of $70,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we have Ms. McAfee joining us with some PowerPoint slides. Good morning.
Hello, good morning, Commissioners. It's nice to be here. Thank you for putting us on your agenda. So every year about this time, we show up asking you to support our JDAI initiative. As you all know, we've been involved in this since 2014. There we go. It is an Annie Casey Foundation initiative, and it's about a juvenile justice transformation reform effort. Just a quick, few quick highlights about the initiative. As I said, we started in 2014. So before you, you can see how much grant funding we've received over the course of those several years. One thing to highlight, you'll notice this past grant cycle, we received $95,000 in addition to the 55,000 grant award. And that was in recognition for the exemplary work that the county has moved forward with the JDAI eight core principles. So that's a big shout out to the entire community for supporting these efforts, both, you know, when we show up and ask you all for something, but certainly as far as just showing up for the work that we're doing. So that's a huge compliment to the county. 2022, 2023 fiscal year, this year's grant, as was previously said, is for $70,000. All of that brings a grand total of almost $710,000 that's been brought to our community. And some of the exciting stuff that I'll talk about in a minute is this, this money does not go towards salaries. It does not go to any kind of personnel. It goes to programming and resources and initiatives within our community. Every year, we do an annual report. And we look at our first year with a baseline, which was 2013, and we compare it with the existing year. So in 2021, we compared our baseline of 2013. And we had decreased security detention average daily population from three youth to 1.6, which is a decrease of almost 50%. You all know that Monroe County has never been a huge security detention community. We don't have a detention facility in our community, and we try very, very hard not to utilize that. But just in a few short years, we've reduced that by a person and a half, which, you know, doesn't sound like remarkable progress. But I guarantee you, if you are that person or you are that family whose young person didn't spend a day in detention, it's amazing. 2013, we had 66 young people, or I'm sorry, 66 admissions into security detention. And we've reduced that almost by half. The average length of stay is also decreasing. Just a little caveat that I try and remind folks that as our security detention utilization decreases, it's not uncommon for the average length of stay to increase a little bit. Because what we're trying to do is get rid of those young people who are there for one, two, three, four days. And so what we might find is there are more serious offenses that are being detained or for young people who are looking for outs, resources outside of our community. I'm super excited to tell you that did not happen in '21. But the reduction in length of stay isn't quite as impressive as some of the other numbers. But I think we can talk about why that is. Finally, commitments to the Indiana Department of Correction, which is the equivalent of prison for young people. Again, Monroe County has never been a a strong user of Department of Correction for our young people. And in 2013, we committed three young people. And in 2021, it was only one person. So again, a 66% reduction in the use of incarceration or long-term incarceration prison, if you will, for our young people. 2021 to 22 grant highlights, just a couple of quick things to shout out to the community about is we were able to partner with national experts. We partnered with Center for Children's Law and Policy. They did a community assessment and are now helping us expand what resources are available to young people and families in the community, ideally to keep them out of the youth justice system. So we're not just looking at ways that we can work and serve with families better, but we're also looking at ways that we can increase community capacity so that young people don't even touch the youth justice system. I'm sure you'll be hearing more about this in a few months. But seven community members recently returned from Toledo, Ohio, which is Lucas County. And they have done amazing work at transforming their entire youth justice system. They have all kinds of community opportunities. They divert almost all low-level misdemeanants and even some low-level felons from the youth justice system altogether by creating really, really strong community partnerships and linkage for families and young people with our community. We've provided learning opportunities for community and staff. We've done trust-based relational intervention. We continue to support the undoing racism and community engagement. Actually, this afternoon, a couple of probation officers and I and some community folks are heading out to Switchyard Park. We've done this already, just providing sandwiches for lunch or dinner, bottled waters. We did it one day a couple of weeks ago when the heat index was over 100. Just as an outreach to the community to say probation isn't just about compliance and punishment, but we also live in this community and we want to do everything we can to keep our community safe and well-fed. We've also continued to sponsor our book club and reach out to the community in any way that we can to support things that are already existing. For instance, the MC3 Summit sponsored by our YSB. JDAI funds were used to support accessibility services for last year's summit. The grant that we're asking you to ratify, as I said, we're looking at community, at expanding our community diversion opportunities, really looking at what are some things that our community already has existing that we can support? How can we increase capacity? Things such as restorative justice, things such as mentoring opportunities so that we can try and keep kids and families out of our system. Youth and family engagement, we're going to continue that hard work. We recently did a presentation to our departmental leadership on what we think we can offer to keep kids and families involved after their involvement with the system. Because we know that impacted populations are often not included in conversations about how do we transform systems. Local youth initiatives, as I said, the MC3 Summit. We're also going to support the city of Bloomington's youth summits that they offer in the spring and in the fall. And again, that continuing community engagement. Quickly, just wanted to give you some highlights with the security detention information. I know that we're very, very, our people are very important to our initiative. But I also don't want to not mention the fact of the dollars that are being saved. So in 2007, we spent $432 in security detention costs. In 2021, we spent $70,000. Since we began the JDAI initiative, we've decreased detention costs almost 70%. So again, I know the money is extraordinarily important. People are equally more important. But I wanted to highlight a couple of the successes that we've had with this initiative. And so appreciate your continued support and ask you to ratify the contract that's in front of you.
All right, thank you so much, Ms. McAfee. All right. Thank you so much, Ms. McAfee. What a bunch of great information you provided to us. That was awesome. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
I'm really proud to live in a community that does this kind of work and be associated with people like Ms. McAfee and the JDAI staff. I've always appreciated the work that you do on DEIB, which now has another letter attached for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. And I think that belonging is one of the things that you've excelled in. So thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this is just such a wonderful program, and you really have accomplished amazing things. I think that one of the things that really impresses me about it is the involvement of families, which I think probably makes a huge difference. Thank you for all your work on this.
A huge kudos and thank you to you and your staff. You have a lot to be proud of, and we really appreciate your work. And what that does is it builds a better community for all of us. So thank you for that. All right. Let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U-Hill room. All right. Seeing none. We will come back for a vote. All those in favor of ratifying the 2022-2023 Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative Grant Contract signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all so much. Take care.
All right. Item B, please.
Move approval of Painting Nature Program Service Agreement. Fund name, non-reverting contractual, fund number 1179, in an amount of $290.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Robertson joining us from Parks.
Yes. Good morning. So this service agreement is for an individual to provide two painting nature programs in our parks. One of them would be scheduled in July, and then another one will be at a later date in the fall. So these programs will consist of a 30-minute environmental education activity to begin, and then will be followed by the painting, which will take around an hour and a half. The first event is scheduled at Will Detmer Park on July 16th for anybody that's interested in attending. And then there will be a registration fee for $10. It should be noted on the agreement that the amount is not to exceed $290. That's actually for both programs, so each one will be 145. I myself am not a great painter, but I have no doubt that this will be a popular activity. So if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, I really appreciate, though, that we're bringing people to nature in a different way. I think this is really a fun initiative.
It is.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, this sounds like a lot of fun. I was wondering if it's open to all age groups or...
As far as I know, so the instruction or what the person who's leading the painting will be walking everybody through, which is why it takes an hour and a half. So it should be fairly easy for all age groups to paint the picture. So as far as I'm aware, there's not an age group, or sorry, age limit on the program.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for bringing this to us. It's a great program. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U-Hill room. Seeing none. We will come back for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Painting Nature Program Service Agreement signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Item C, please.
Move approval of ordinance 2022-19 Firearms in County Buildings.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second, and Mr. Cockrell will tell us all about it today.
Yes, and I will ask you to make a slight amendment to this. Essentially, what this does is if we have an ordinance that says at, that says at the time it was approved, there are certain buildings that are part of, that have courtrooms in it, and that that can be expanded or not, given the current legislation. We wanted to make sure we added the Monroe County Health Services Building and the Monroe County Youth Services Building to that list. The change is when we originally did it, we did not own the Community Corrections Building. And so this says the Community Corrections space, and then there was a description, only the county leased areas are part of this prohibition. So we'd want to remove the language that says only the county leased areas are part of this prohibition because we own the whole building. And then we'd want to format the Community Corrections space to read the Community Corrections Building located at 403 West 7th Street. But this is, but that is not really a change. It's adding the two new buildings that are the change.
Right. Okay, I'm going to make a motion to amend as outlined by Mr. Cockrell regarding Community Corrections Building and the leased space. Second. Move motion and a second. Any public comment on amending the motion? Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium. Seeing none. All those in favor of amending ordinance 2022-19 signify by saying aye. Aye. The motion's amended. So would you like to continue to walk through the buildings that are on the list for the public?
Yeah, and the buildings that, and the first four were originally part, originally part of this is the Monroe County Courthouse. As you know, this room is a backup for the Circuit Court. The Monroe County Justice Building, for obvious reasons. The Curry Building, and we have the Child Support Courtroom in that building. The Monroe, and the Monroe County Community Corrections Building, where they do some hearings for people who utilize that. And then the additions that we already talked about are the Health Building, Health Services Building located at 119 West 7th Street and the Monroe County Youth Services Bureau located at 615 South Adams Street.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, but I'm glad we're enacting this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, just thank you for making sure this happens.
Yeah, it's really important for all of us and our safety. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on the Zoom screen or come to the podium in the Nat U-Hill room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the amended ordinance 2022-19 signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you so much. And we don't have any appointments today. I do have a few announcements. Probably the most important one is on July 4, we will be rededicating the Alexander Memorial on the southeast corner of the Courthouse Square. And that will begin at 9:00 a.m., and that's with the assumption that the parade begins at 10:00. So many people have donated, assisted, provided support to make this happen. We're so excited and proud of this moment. It's a perfect day to rededicate this important monument for our community to all the veterans of all the wars. So please join us at 9:00 a.m. on the courthouse lawn, and the program will be done in time for the parade, which is scheduled to begin at 10:00. So you can get there early and get downtown and enjoy both events. It's a perfect way to spend 4th of July. If the weather is inclement, we will move the ceremony indoors. So we're prepared for either. Just a reminder for all of our residents that we do have office hours. We do hold office hours via Zoom six days a month. And all you have to do is go to co.munro.us, look at the calendar, and you can see a variety of days and times when we're available to you for, to hear your ideas, to hear your concerns. These, as Commissioner Giffens points out, these are not recorded meetings. These are, these are private conversations. Virtual office hours, we're really happy to provide that for our residents. There are two blood drives scheduled for July, July 14th, which is a Thursday, 10 to 3:00, and Friday, July 15th, 1 to 6:00. These are both going to be held at IV Tech. And if you want to make an appointment, which we encourage you to do, please do so at redcross.org. And thank you to IV Tech Emergency Management and redcross.org. And just a reminder, the Health Improvement Plan kickoff meeting is July 14th, 12 to 1:30 at Fountain Square. And did I miss anything else?
The, all the county buildings will be closed on July 4 in honor of the holiday, and I hope everyone, let's hope there's no rain that day.
Yeah, it's looking, every time I look at the weather, it looks worse. I hate to say it. And all the buildings are closed, except the courthouse if it rains, which is where we'll be. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Yeah, wishing everyone a safe and happy 4th of July holiday. Our next meeting, we do not have a work session, correct? Ms. Birdie, we don't have a work session? Okay. Our next meeting is, will be July 6, right here in the Nat U-Hill room at 10:00 a.m. and also via Zoom. And we do want to remind folks to sign up for, to apply for boards and commissions. We have a number of key positions open. Redevelopment Commission, Economic Development Commission, Plan Commission, and Border Zoning Appeals, just at the top of my, off the top of my head. So, but, so please apply soon. co.munro.us, you will find the application online. So with that, thank you, everyone. Have a safe and happy 4th. We're adjourned.